Melton.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Bagley.
Here.
Harding. Hugg is absent. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Bagley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the nation under God, indivisible, and with great majesty and power.
Good afternoon, everybody. Please be seated. Just wanted to announce the reminder that we have this fall cleanup coming up in October on each Saturday. You can go to website is www.wasteline.org, general information, fall cleanup. It'll give you your neighborhoods that are doing that from nine to two on those Saturdays. And you can also call the Omaha Fall Cleanup Hotline at 402-444-4636. If you have the chance, help some of your neighbors if they don't have ability to get rid of some of their junk and take advantage of this great annual thing that the city does. Thanks, Ms. President.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. Look forward to hearing from you on our many items. I encourage you to turn your cell phones off or at least to vibrate. And if you have any difficulty hearing the proceedings today, you can talk to our meeting attendant here for listening devices, or you may also access the closed captioning on the screen in the back of the room.
Item six, resolution to approve the City of Omaha 2025 property tax requests.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I want to submit two documents in relation to this by a gentleman that mailed them in last week, but I think they're pertinent to this item today. Along the lines of this, I'm against any further increases. In fact, we, the people, want some decreases. I listened to the people this morning complaining about things that the state imposes, and then we have to do this and do that, and it costs money. But we don't really need a city trolley. We really don't need three or four more city parking garages. We don't really need the added expense of the recent TIF project that's we think has been agreed to. There's a lot of ways to trim the tax increases and help keep people in Omaha. I may have to leave Omaha eventually because I can't afford to buy another house here. Apartments are too expensive. Houses are too expensive. All because of programs like that, particularly when crossroads projects, one in Mayberry, are setting idle, cost of constructions go up and up and up. Got to find a better way to do it. So we're against.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. I think it would be worth noting that we previously already voted on what we would set the tax levy at when we voted on the budget. And so, Mr. Curtis, if you could just confirm, we reduced the tax levy. So we've reduced property taxes, correct?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, yes. We reduced it about a penny, about a penny point seven, I want to say. So it's a reduction in the levy rate.
And over the last year, last 11 years, I think we've reduced it by about 11%. Is that about accurate?
Yeah. And if you don't, if you include the 3.5 cent that the voters approved that we never implemented, it's more like 17 or 18%.
Okay. So we've reduced property taxes, and this resolution is, it's just a resolution confirming the levy reduction that we passed in the budget amendment?
That's correct.
Okay. There was some comment about, I don't want my taxes increased. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. This is, we're setting the levy lower than we had it last year with this resolution, correct, Mr. Curtis?
That is correct. I think the total property tax ask is up about 2%.
And then, in addition, we, when we found out that we were getting 1.2 million more than we had thought, when we approved the budget last week, we actually included that and reduced it even more, reduced the levy even more.
That's correct. The original was 1.5 cents, and then I think it was about another 0.22 potentially with that additional decrease.
Okay. Yeah. And so what we're doing today is then just confirming by resolution what we did last week with, in the budget.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's why I support it, because it's a tax, it's a property tax decrease, which I think if other government entities would follow suit, we would see significant, we would see some significant tax relief. But as most people know, we only make up about 20% of your total property taxes. So I'm glad that this council and this mayor has continued to decrease our levy at least five times since I've been, been on the council. And I know multiple years in a row, we've now done it, and we've all worked together. Regardless of what side of the party aisle we're on, we've all been together on this one. And so I appreciate the mayor's efforts to continue to reduce our property taxes and this council's efforts to work together to do so. So thank you.
Thank you. I agree with that analysis. This does accurately reflect what the city council passed unanimously last week, which maintains the collection, anticipated collection rate at 99.5% and reduces our property tax rate down to, under 44 cents to 43.994. So I agree with those comments and also commend the city council for doing that and the mayor's proposed budget, but taking it one step further to get where, where this then reflects the 43.994. The honor for the lights, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item seven, to consider a classy liquor license for Sullivan's Bar located at 3929 Farnham Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Chris Aquazino and Chris Moore here for any questions you might have about the liquor license for Sullivan's.
Thank you. And your, and your address for the record, too?
3929 Farnham Street, please.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Ms. President. Chris and Chris, good afternoon. Appreciate you coming down today. I know this is a long, historical bar that was in Blackstone that you guys, under Dan Houlihan, moved across the street to the corner where it's anchoring the west end of Blackstone now. So I know, got to know Dan Houlihan a little bit, and I know he's retiring and moving on. So you guys just want to talk a little bit about any changes and the history of Sullivan's for us today?
Sure. Yeah. Approximately 10 years ago, we opened back up in the corner of the current location from across the street. Blackstone's been really flourishing ever since, and we've gotten to take advantage of that with Dan, myself, for the last five years, and Chris, I think, for the last four years. So he is moving on to bigger and better things, and we're looking to take over for him. Not looking to make any large changes or format changes, just looking to do some updating of the property itself, and then, you know, update the offerings, elevate the menu, and continue to make it a great, safe place to have a nice lounge in Blackstone.
And I know when they moved from across the street years ago, when Blackstone really started taking off, you guys moved the original Oak Bar across the street. Do you want to tell that story really quick? That was pretty cool history.
There's a quite a, it's kind of a funny, you know, video. If you go onto our Facebook page, if you go way back into the big, beginning of the page, you'll see a video of, there's probably 15, 16 guys, middle of January, it's cold as blazes, and everybody's strapping up and carrying the bar across the street. It is, is quite the undertaking. I was away at the time. I, I'm a retired military, longtime friend of Dan Houlihan, since I was stationed at Offit back in the day. And, you know, it's been wonderful to see the success that Dan has had with the business and how it's flourished. And I'm, I know I'm honored to take the manhole and keep, keep the place going strong, so.
I appreciate that, Chris. And I know the sign is the original as well from the Sullivan Brothers when they had that, back when my dad was a mailman in the 1980s when they were on the north side.
Established in '54.
Yep. And it was, it was a lot different culture back then. So I'm glad to make the motion to support this today. And I know, having been in, and enjoying Blackstone myself, and recently been in, and, and I had a March Madness gathering with some old high school buddies, and the service was excellent. And I know you guys will, will keep Sullivan's in good hands, that it's a safe and welcoming environment on that anchor in the west end of Blackstone. And, and I know, Chris, being a neighbor next to my newly married daughter up in Exarban, then, then I know that you guys have a good tie to the, to the neighborhood and to my district. So I appreciate you coming down, and I wish you the best of luck, and I'm glad to support this motion today. Thanks, Ms. President.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a classy liquor license for Via Regency located at 10730 Pacific Street, Suite 120.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Ethan Bonded, 12977 Hamilton Streets. I'm the owner and operator of Via Farina, which is located downtown. This is our second location that we're hoping to open in October in the Regency area. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thanks. Good luck.
Items nine through 12 can be considered together for Iron Ridge Replat 2 located at 12805 Ford Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR District and R6 District to R6 District. Item 10, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 12, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items nine through 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Rob Woodling, Foundation Development. I'll be the developer of the project. Just to give some background, this will be a 64-unit mixed-income senior housing development on the old side of the Magellan Pumping Station on 120th and Ford. What we've done is, we've, we've met with the neighbors and had conversations with them, and also with the city, and trying to work to, to place the building in the, in the best possible location for all. And here's our, our site layout there. So what we've done is, in working with the city, they've asked us to do a, a PUD to go with the R5 zoning requirements with an R6 building. And so with the R6 zoning requirements, that's a 25-foot rear yard setback. We're actually 120, so we've pushed that building significantly further north as, as much as we could. We'd go further north, but then we also can't be too close to Ford Street without having a wall built, when eventually Ford Street gets widened. So we're, we're balancing those two acts. On our side yard setback, that's 10 feet on the east side, and we're actually 110 feet. So we've tried to, to push this away from the houses and towards the commercial and, and Ford Street as much as we can. So like I said, this will be mixed incomes for seniors. Be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 13 through 17 and 27 can be considered together for Hanscom Place Replat 16 located southeast of Park Avenue and Poppleton Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 13 and 14, ordinances to rezone this property from R7 District and R8 District to R7 District and NBD District. Item 15, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district. Item 16, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 17, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement. Item 27, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district.
Public hearings and votes on items 13 through 17 and number 27 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Trevor Vescrano with TD2 Engineering and Surveying, 10836 Old Mill Road. We are the civil engineers on the project. I'm also here with Cheryl Garst with Incommun Community Development. As mentioned, we're seeking approval for the rezoning, PUR, final plat, and subdivision agreements for lots one and two, Hanscom Place Replat 16. I can give kind of a quick overview of the site here, starting with Lot One, looking at the, the PUR site plan. Building One will be kind of a commercial use space, and then Buildings Two and Three will be the, oh, yeah. Buildings Two and Three there will be the multifamily units. Building Three will also have an underground parking garage to serve this development here. We're also proposing public improvements, on-street parking, new sidewalk, new landscaping areas, and then moving to the west site, or the east site, sorry. We're proposing just one multifamily building here, kind of the same as the west site. We'll have on-street parking, new sidewalk, new landscaping. Post-construction stormwater for each lot will be handled separately. They'll each have their own treatment manhole and underground detention. If there are any site-related questions, I'm happy to answer them, and Cheryl can answer any building or unit-related kind of questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Hi, Joyce Von Drossick, 619 South 37th Street. More of a constructive critic. I would just be curious to know if the bike lane along Poppleton Street could be moved into, along the sidewalk, and the parking could be moved out into the street. Some bollards put in between the bike lane and the parking, instead of just doing all of the construction and rebuilding, and putting the bike lane just back in as is. Just move that bike lane in towards the curb, make it a little more safe. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Cheryl, couple of questions for you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for coming down today. You want to just talk a little bit about the timeline that you guys have invested in this project and the outreach that you did to the community?
Yes, it's been extensive. Incommun Community Development has been a staple in the Park Avenue neighborhood for the past 18 years. In 2022, they started Incommun Housing Development Corporation, and I just joined the corporation this past January. They are a model for the country on citizen engagement in this neighborhood. They do it right. I'm an urban planner, and they should be modeled in every textbook. They have mini-community meals every month where they are constantly asking neighbors what they want to see. They've had robust planning in the Park Avenue neighborhood plan, and many public meetings per the home requirements, well-advertised in the paper, social media, at our Park Avenue Commons. That's regularly programmed with ESL, citizenship classes, youth programming. Again, those community meals, all engaging with this project. We did have one person that was a little concerned about this project, but she has turned around, knowing that this is for people, service industry, that are making $30,000 a year to $60,000 a year. These are workforce, this is workforce housing. So there was a little bit of concern that people weren't not going to be employed, that were housed here, and, and concern about other social issues that were bringing to the neighborhood. But we are invested in this neighborhood, and I think have addressed some of those concerns with the one concerned citizen.
I appreciate that. And I know I visited with Christian down there at, at your office there, and there's no demo that has to take place here for this project, right? It's just kind of, it's shovel, I guess, get a shovel and equipment in the ground and get rolling on it. What's your timeline that you're looking on this?
Yes, thank you for that question. This has been a vacant property for a number of years. I think five years plus. We bought it from Mike Peters of Evergreen Development and Clarity Development. It's, it's positioned for multifamily housing. We were just awarded from the Finance Authority a tax credit allocation for this project, and would like to close with our investor by year end, if not end of January 2025. It'll be an 18-month construction schedule, and this is for Phase One, Poppleton East, which is the 51 unit, again, on the east side of the lot. Poppleton West is soon after. Again, we were very fortunate to be supportive by the state and the city with ARPA money for this development, and we do want to get this second phase going before December of 2026. So, you know, both are positioned for development. We have a good capital stack of partnerships, including the City of Omaha. Thank you very much for those city home funds, and are looking to, again, start construction spring of 2025.
And this is just a little bit south of Georgia Row, correct, on Park Avenue?
Yeah, just a few blocks south of Hanscom and Georgia Row. That was our first project with Incommun Community Development. That was just before our Incommun Housing Development was established. That is occupied and, and doing well. Also, our market study is, was, I was quite shocked by the market study coming into this position. There are zero vacancies in every comparable building like this, if not one or two vacancies, you know, which will naturally occur as people move on. And three properties with waitlist. So as you've heard, there's 100,000 units short in this metro for affordable housing. It's, it's a hard, it's a hard job. We were giving some statistics earlier that this is a $19 million project with assessed value of 4.3. So welcome to post-COVID economics and affordable housing economics. These are, are very tough properties to do, but very rewarding. We're going to be at a rent of about $600 to $1,700 a month. We're even trying to get that $1,700 a month for those three bedrooms, even further down with some private philanthropy. But really trying to hit that target where a person is not spending 30% of their income on housing. So then they can be positioned well into the future.
I appreciate your explanation on that. And again, Christian was, he was very open, and I know this has been a long process since I've been on the council. They've been talking about it, and I visited with him, and I know he did the outreach, and, and I had the, the one email that you referenced. So I, I'm glad to support this today, and I, I'll keep an eye on things down there, and I wish you the best of luck. Thanks again for coming down.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'll make a motion to support this, Ms. President. Thanks.
Motion in a second to approve. No for the lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Items 18 through 22 can be considered together for Magnolia Trails located southeast of 216th and Ford Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 18 through 20, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District, R4 District and R5 District. Item 21, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 22, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 18 through 22 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Jeff Elliott, 7979 South 240th and Gretna, here to ask for your approval of the Magnolia Trails final plat subdivision agreement and rezoning. It's 206 single-family lots located at 216th and Ford Street. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Thanks.
Item 23, an ordinance to rezone property located at 408 William Street from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 23 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Jeanette Nielsen of Nielsen Custom Homes and J. Nielsen Construction. My address is 13476 Spring Ridge Loop Blair. We're here about 408 William Street. Just requesting it be rezoned to R5 from industrial.
All right. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion to approve in a second. No for the lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thanks.
Item 24, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1231 South 15th Street from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 24 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 25, an ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 45th and H Streets from R4 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Damien Willey, owner of the property at 45th and H Street. I'm looking to increase zoning to R5 from R4 for a duplex.
Okay. And your address for the record, too?
Damien Willey, 4920 K Street.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 26, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overlay district located at 1110 South 20th Avenue Plaza. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 26 is today. Proponents, please.
Barton Arnold, Signworks, 4713 F Street.
Thank you.
Hi, and I'm Grace Longley. I'm the owner at Lyric Townhomes through Megumi 2, and just very happy to meet you all, welcome you down to come and have a look sometime. It's a lovely new development, and we're requesting the signage. Is it a variance? Is that the right word? Thank you for your help.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. And your address, too?
My address, 1325 Linwood Lane, Omaha, 68152.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Items 28 and 29 can be considered together for property located west of 50th Street and Raven Oaks Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 28, an ordinance to rezone this property from R6 District to R5 District. Item 29, an ordinance to repeal the PUD overlay district.
Public hearing and vote on items 28 and 29 are today. Proponents, please.
My name's Lyle Berkeley. My address is 5025 Raven Oaks Drive, and we're just wanting to make these changes to be consistent with the lots that are, five lots that are west of me.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes. Thank you. I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't get your name.
Lyle Berkeley.
Okay. Could you please come back up?
Lyle Berkeley. Last name is spelled B-U-R-K-L-E.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask on what level of engagement that you had in the, in the area in terms of your neighborhood?
I am, I own one of the lots, and I've lived there for more than 30 years.
Right. So you, I, do you not have any neighbors or anything?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Did you share with them your movement?
Yes. Yes, they are aware.
They're aware of what's going on here?
Yes, they are.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So you did have some conversation with them about what you're proposing here today?
Yes, yes. And I'm part of a homeowners association. They're aware what's going on, too.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have any pushback? Thank you. Did you have any pushback at all?
No, I haven't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Is there a motion? Motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items thirty through thirty-three can be considered together for property located southwest of Thirtieth and L Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item thirty, an ordinance to rezone this property from CC District and HI District to HI District. Item thirty-one, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item thirty-two, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from office commercial to industrial. And item thirty-three, a resolution to approve a major amendment to the special use permit to allow meatpacking and related industries in the HI District.
Public hearing and vote on items thirty through thirty-three are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is JB Ingram. I'm here representing Greater Omaha Packing. I stand ready to answer any questions you might have. Essentially, this is just representative of the expansions and ongoing activities we have in that location.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items thirty-four through forty were held on September tenth. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to approve. I'll just note that items number thirty-nine and forty, of course, are the crossroads redevelopment that we discussed, quite thoroughly last week, and that's why they're on consent this week, but I'll confirm my support for them. I do think this new redevelopment agreement provides additional accountability to timelines of construction, gives the city more control as a partner in that respect, too, by owning some of this property, and certainly gives both partners the ability to be accountable for site maintenance, too, going forward, should this be approved and once that property transfer occurs. So for those reasons, I'm supportive. We'll hold them to those commitments, and we look forward to seeing this go vertical in the spring of twenty-twenty-five. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you. The public hearings on agenda items forty-one through forty-seven are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. This is items forty-one through forty-seven. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item forty-eight, an ordinance to grant a permanent right-of-way easement and land to OPPD for underground distribution facilities along city property near Epley Airfield.
The vote on number forty-eight is today. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Bagley Epstein. Item forty-nine, a resolution to approve the appointment of Todd Swartzak to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank.
The public hearing and vote on number forty-nine is today. I remind council members, these next two items require five, five council members in support to have them pass. Are there any proponents to number forty-nine? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Item number forty-nine. Do we have the applicant here? The person that we're making this appointment for? Todd Swartzak?
He is not here.
Okay, so unfortunately, I'm not able to apply due diligence, so I'm not able to support this item.
Okay. I don't see any further lights. There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to one. Item fifty, a resolution to approve the appointment of Court Bonner to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank.
Public hearing and vote on number fifty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Again, item number fifty, Mr. Bonner, is he present today?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Again, I am not able to apply due diligence. Therefore, I will be voting no on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
I was able to call Mr. Bonner yesterday and visited with him on the phone. He is a non-voting member at this time and is moving into a voting role, and very well-qualified. Lives in District Five. And so I'll be gladly supporting his appointment.
Thank you. Is that a motion? I guess, or it was a motion and a second. I'm sorry. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to one. Item fifty-one, an ordinance to amend Chapter nineteen, Article two of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Schedule by Amending Section nineteen-eight-eight to Reduce the Amount of the Occupation Tax on Telephone Companies Is Communication and Opposition.
The public hearing on number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items fifty-two through eighty-one, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at two-thirty-six.